Good evening, I'd like to call to order the council meeting for September 18th.
Okay, Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Uh, mine is on, but...
Present, 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 present.
Uh, city?
Mine's on.
Hello?
It's not out there.
Hmm? It's not out there? Uh, we have a sound problem? Alright, Councilmember Garza, there we go.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
There are eight members present at quorum, we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
This is an opportunity, does anyone have, uh, someone they'd like us to remember at this time? Seeing none, if we could please rise.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of September 11th.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to move the minutes of the September 11th meeting as written.
We have a motion on the minutes, are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to presentations, we have a presentation on the rezoning and special land use permit for 415 and 421 West Kalamazoo Street.
Uh, Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, we're supposed to have members from the City Rescue Mission, if you can come up down to the well here?
To the table, yep.
To the table, I apologize, in half a seat please. Introduce yourselves and welcome.
If you would make sure that the green light is on, and there's a button here on the microphone, no, on the front.
Down on the bottom there, yup.
Yes.
There you go.
Good evening, I'm Randy Barton with the City Rescue Mission, the Senior Director of Operations there. I've been working there for over ten years, and have been a Lansing resident my entire life. During that time, both professionally and personally, have seen that there has been a dramatic increase of the homeless population inside of Lansing. During the time of the City Rescue Mission, you recognize that every face is a person, it's not someone that may do things that others would claim, and we've found that many folks, the majority of the folks who we serve are people just as you and I. City Rescue Mission has been around since 1911, we're now in our 112th year of operation of meeting the needs in Lansing. We focus on three things: food, shelter, and the hope of the gospel of Christ. As a religious organization, we hold to our faith, and we service folks of all faiths, all walk of life, every walk, creed, orientation, we welcome them inside of our doors. But we've seen that the need continues to increase. We have noticed that the need increases, and we are grateful that we have been equipped to help meet that need. Of the Lansing area, we have over forty-five hundred different individuals that keep us privately funded, individuals, businesses, churches, all support us to allow us to be able to do what it is that we do, and we continue to do more. In 2019, we were servicing somewheres around 135 individuals each night, providing them with food and shelter. Fast forwarding to this year, we are now looking at near 250 individuals each night, and the need continues to grow. The numbers that have been provided in the packet given to you show that last year we were serving roughly 123,000 meals, this year we're on track to do 136,000 meals. Last year, as we did 72,000 nights of shelter, this year we're on track to do 90 nights of shelter. No matter if we look at a few years back till present, or last year to present, we see the need continues to grow and grow. We're willing to step up and meet that need, we're willing to stretch and to do more. But our dilemma, as we continue to operate above capacity, is that we have recognized that we're gonna have to leave the locations that we're at now and seek a new location. We've spoken, or we've looked at many locations around town, there's been different reasons that they did not work out, but we found a location at 415 and 421 West Kalamazoo that we think would be a good fit for us, a good location inside of the community, to help meet the need that continues to grow. Our goal is not to bring a problem, but rather to alleviate concerns that already exist and grow to meet what is likely will be a greater need even yet in the future. We know we provided you with the layouts of the building, some of the tentative design ideas, if you'd like, we also have the even updated version of that that we'd be happy to provide for you at this time if you'd like it. But I'd like to point out the fact that even beyond anything that we discussed tonight, there's new information as well, that we are excited to have the go-ahead to present this evening as well, that we're in talks now to work on providing medical care facility at this location as well. One of the increasing things we need, or we see within our homeless, those experiencing homelessness, is that there are increasingly aged group that have unique medical needs. One of the things we see oftentimes in communities is that people are even experiencing more chronic disabilities because of lack of medical care. And if we were to get the rezoning to where is necessary to operate the shelter, we'd be able to provide food and shelter on location, we'd be able to provide medical needs on location, and this would also allow even for greater meeting the need, that that would free up other of our locations, specifically the Women and Children Shelter at 2216 South Cedar Street, to become wholly a family shelter, thus doubling, or even more than doubling, its current capacities. By moving from our current locations, our goal, our five-year, six-year, seven-year, depending on how quickly things can move along, in multiple phases, would be to make the 415 and 421 West Kalamazoo Street property that for single adults, where we'd be able to see our capacities more than double. Also with moving our single ladies to that location, that would also allow our family capacity to double. We're willing to take on the challenge of this, we've been equipped to do so, we're, we look around and we see we may be one of the only willing to step up and to meet the need, but we need your help. We're willing to take on the challenge, if you'd be willing to grant us the rezoning that is necessary for it. Got with me today Spencer from the MEA Group, he's over the design of this project. We provided you with designs that were current as of last week, would you like to have current designs that have been updated since then that we could provide you for this evening?
Yes, please, thank you.
Right. Spencer can bring those up to you and provide those for you. Spencer's been working with us throughout this project, is very knowledgeable and has proven to listen well to the needs that the community has, and put together plans that would help us to meet those needs.
Yeah, so as Randy introduced, I'm Spencer Lippert, part of MEA Group Architects, project manager there. Uh, over the past three years, MEA Group Architects has worked with the City Rescue Mission to find a way that a facility can expand the services of the City Rescue Mission to meet the growing needs that he discussed. Uh, we've spent time, energy, and money studying a multitude of options in many different capacities, some were renovating existing building locations that they owned, some were looking at vacant properties around the city, and some were looking at just vacant lots. Uh, and finally, 415 and 421 were determined to be a strong candidate, and they meet, to meet the City Rescue Mission's needs. Um, the existing buildings at 415 and 421 are approximately 37,000 square feet in total, and the addition that we are proposing in the designs that you see is roughly about 7,000 square feet. The new location would increase the capacity to 300 beds, and offer sheltered spaces day and night. This would include a protected courtyard to encourage gathering within the boundary of the building's walls, uh, it would include dining, meeting spaces, chapel spaces, and dormitories. Rezoning that we're requesting of these parcels would actually move the parcels to a more restrictive zoning typology, but would permit the City Rescue Mission to create a sheltered care facility and meet the needs of the on-house population.
Okay, um, we'll open it up, are you done with your presentation?
Yes, thank you for your consideration.
I have Councilmember Brown, Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Cost.
Uh, thank you, President Wood, thank you all for being here today, thank you for providing the, I guess, the schematics or the renderings. Um, I noticed, so if I'm looking at this correctly, I guess my question is, you talked about a courtyard and then a day shelter, from my understanding, currently, at a certain time of day, people are not able to stay in the facility, so is that going to be a change with this proposed facility as far as having places to, you know, to congregate or whatever they need to do, as well as, um, you said daytime? So if you could just speak to that a little bit, please?
Yes, this would allow us to expand our services, as many are aware, at our men's shelter, there is not a day shelter, which means that our guests currently, at nine o'clock, they enter the community, and the difficult thing is, where do they go? Well, a lot of times they go places where they're not considered to be the most savory type. With this facility, it would allow us to have a day shelter, to where people have a place to go, to where they're not gonna be seen as a nuisance or a hazard. Yeah, that also helps us to alleviate some of in the evening, on the Michigan Avenue, right there in front of the ballpark, in front of the Capitol, we recognize it's probably not the way that the city wants to be presented during the rush hour times. Uh, and so this means that there won't be lengthy lines of people waiting out in the public to be checking in, because we're open all day long. People are able to already be in the facility and check in internally without entering the public fair. Uh, for the courtyard that you mentioned, yes, we would, we have goals of creating a courtyard space, the people are able to still be within our facility proper, as far as they're still checked into our facility, they haven't left, they're not on the public walkways, they're not under the streets, they're not in the parking lot, but they're able to still be checked into our facility, to be outdoors, to enjoy anything, from fresh air, conversation, a chat at the picnic table, or anything else they'd like to do while still being contained within the property as well.
Thank you, that's phenomenal, and then my last question, I noticed that you have, it looks to be two men's dorms approximately 5,500 or 6,500 square feet, and then it looks as though, if I'm looking at this correctly, you have a women's expansion, approximately 4,000 square feet, so you'd be housing more men than women, and I would assume because you have that other family facility?
Yes, the families would all be at the current Women and Children Shelter on South Cedar Street, just the way that our dynamics are, we do have about twice as many single men as it is single women.
Okay.
But both, both men and women's capacities would be doubled from what they are now.
Okay, thank you, that's all my questions, thank you, President Wood, thank you so much.
Thank you, I've got Councilmember Spatafor, Councilmember Cost, and Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Madam President, my questions might not be for the folks here, they're more about the, the documents about the rezone, is that a...
Go ahead.
Okay. My question, I would ask anyone on the committee to maybe take back to the planning department, is it, it looks like there were several other sites that were also selected, but they were told they were in DT3 zoning and could not be rezoned. These two parcels are both DT3, and wondering why these are eligible for rezoning, but others aren't? Also, why we're not being told this is a spot zone regardless of the fact that it says, unlike most zoning districts, the RAR district is only intended to address very specific locations, so you would not find other surrounding zoning districts to comport with it, that's a question for zone, for code. And then my final question is, would a RAR zoning allow for medical care to take place on site?
Okay, um, who from the committee would like to...
And I'm happy with just asking that at committee and bringing it back.
I can, I can answer some of it.
Okay, and then...
So, we two asked about, um, different sites, and I don't remember a response as to why, and this is a, it is a spot zone. So, the AR Residential Adaptive Reuse District, what we were told by Ms. Statuick is, um, that it's, it's rezoned because the AR Residential Adaptive, excuse me, the Residential Adaptive Reuse District is used for like hospitals, um, and, and other, um, unique type of construction or buildings, and so, I, I think the, the short answer is probably, because AR Residential Adaptive Reuse is, I think it's like what Sparrow is zoned under, and McLaren, and they're used for like the hospitals. The other thing, you know, I asked the same question, were there other alternatives? Um, and we really didn't get to that, because this, we are rezoning it from DT3 to this R-AR, so I don't know.
Yeah, that was, I just noted, if I may, Madam President.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, yes, thanks for that explanation, I did just notice in the report that they sent us on this, it stated that there were other sites that the, that the mission had selected, but were told they couldn't, so, just wondering what, what litmus test code is using to say we will or will not recommend rezoning?
So, what I would ask you, Councilmember Spatafor, is if you could put those in the form of an email and get them to the Chair of the Committee, that way it can be asked during the development and planning committee.
Will do, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, um, was that to answer the question that was asked?
Yes, in relation, um, 'cause I, I spoke with Ms. Statuick as well, and what she was indicating, just to further what Councilwoman Spitzley was saying, is it wasn't that they, because homeless shelters are so unique, it wasn't that the prior DT zones were like, we're not gonna approve you to be here, it was because the facility just wouldn't work, and so, working with the city and the administration, the different departments, they said this may be ideal location, and she indicated that the zoning to the R residential, or RA, whatever the code is, that's how it kinda is done, where you go from there and then a special perm, uh, land use, thank you, is, um, the way that homeless shelters are done, so it's not spot zoning, because there is no zone for homeless shelters, because they're so unique, along with like hospitals and things like that. So, they were saying that even though we're foreign-based, when you're dealing with this level of specialized facility, there really isn't a, this, this is a zoning area for, you know, for this, because what would happen, she indicated, and she can correct me if I'm wrong out there, but, um, if you have a zone and say, we're gonna zone, let's say, Grove Spec Neighborhood as, um, special zone for homeless shelters, then you'll have ten homeless shelters over there. And so that, you know, because that's where the city, so the city doesn't, or the zoning currently doesn't have it, where it's like, you know, you have to approve and go through the process for specialized facilities, so, I bet.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. I have got Councilmember Cost, then we'll go back to Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, President Wood. Um, so, um, you brought up something, all orientations served, and I have a question before we get too deep into this. You're familiar with the City Rescue Mission Lansing doctoral statement, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So actually, this isn't a question for the City Attorney. Um, there's a section in here, um, this requires all of the volunteers, Board of Directors, and personnel to sign this, that mentions human sexuality, um, and, "Any board member, staff member, or volunteer of the mission confirmed to be involved in sexual sin, including molestation, homosexuality, lesbianism, bisexuality, bestiality, incest, fornication, adultery, pornography, or transsexualism, will be immediately removed from any position of the ministry or serve, service by the Executive Director or Board of Directors, and that the only legitimate marriage is the joining of one man and one woman." So I guess my question would be, before we even look at this, is that a violation of the Lansing Human Rights Ordinance?
I can take that back to the City Attorney and get you an answer?
Appreciate it.
Did you have other questions other than you?
Well, I, I have concerns that we're going to invest this much time, but I, I don't wanna get in trouble with the Human Rights Ordinance, it does spell out, um, certain punishments for, uh, people if we don't adhere to it, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, in this process with what, what that reads, that we are adhering to that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, um, Spitzley, you're next.
Thank you, Madam President, and I think that, um, those, those concerns have been brought to me as Chair of Development and Planning. Um, the other, so I have a couple questions. The first question is, I don't see on this, these plans where your medical facility is gonna be, so could you please kind of point that out?
Yeah, I would actually like to know myself, is that is new developments?
Yeah, it's not on...
Even since that was printed, conversations and phone calls today that came to the point where I was able to say, are we committed to this, that we can afford to speak of it publicly?
Okay.
So, as we get those, we'd be happy...
I appreciate that. And then the other thing is, what, under what condition would you turn someone away?
Well, if so, we've come down to two basic rules that we have, of respect and safety, and that's really what we hold to. Our basic conditions of entry is going to be that someone is of age that they're able to stay there by themselves, uh, they're going to need to be reasonably sober, that they can stay within bounds of respect and safety, uh, and they're going to need to have some sort of a ID, uh, which we can also give them direction to, or give them time to, to secure what is necessary, and be able to meet the basic needs, their ADLs, their activities of daily living, uh, those are the general conditions of intake for any of our facilities to operate.
Okay. So, um, those questions, some of those concerns were brought to me as Chair of Development and Planning, and my response is, you know, as a City Councilperson, those aren't, those, this statement and other, um, concerns regarding, you know, whether or not you accept folks of the LGBTQT nature, or you require, um, folks to listen to sermons, we can't take that stuff into consideration when we're considering zoning and, and/or SL, or the SLU. Um, you know, those are, those are concerns, this, this, this doctrinal statement is a concern, and I will say that on, on the record, but I can't take that in consideration when I am, um, looking at whether or not this is an appropriate rezone, or whether or not the SLU is an appropriate special land use.
Councilmember Cost.
Councilmember Spitzley, just to be clear, that was not, not the intent...
I understand.
Yeah, so...
I got those, I got those concerns as well, and so I need to bring those out.
Yeah, absolutely, no, I understand that, I just wanted to be clear that that is not, um, the basis for my zoning question, you know, issues here.
I understand, I understand.
All right.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. So I'm a little torn here, um, probably on things I shouldn't be considering, but it's pretty offensive to me to, I guess, come to the city when number four is in here, that was just read. So, maybe you could consider amending it, um, you know, and striking number four from a required signature to work there, for the reasons that we all are aware of, um, just in good faith. I mean, I know faith is, I guess how you ever define it, but it's just hard to support all the good causes that you guys have, a history of providing, um, just knowing that, so, I won't consider it if we're not supposed to, but it's gonna always be in the back of my mind.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Wood. Um, my question, I guess, is to Emily, are, is the City Rescue Mission receiving any city funds? 'Cause I think to Councilman Cost's point, that would be, you know, if you're religious and you have your own beliefs, and then you're receiving funds, and, um, 'cause I know we've had an issue with that with HRCS before, so are they receiving any grants or anything from the city? I know there's been a question back and forth.
I can double-check and get back to you, but at this time, I don't think so.
Okay.
Can you answer that question, are you receiving any funds?
We are not.
All right, thank you.
Okay. And then currently, I guess this question would be to you, um, this is your, your faith, your belief system, and then this is, you're currently operating a, the homeless shelter now?
Correct.
Under this, this here, and then you have a special land, or special, or zoning, proper zoning for your current facilities?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions? And this will be back before Development and Planning, is that?
Yes, so after tonight is the public hearing and public comment on this, and, um, we are back at the Committee on Development and Planning this Wednesday on September 20th at 4:00 PM. Hopefully, Councilmember Spatafor, we will get that information from planning and zoning, because I, I think that's important, um, and so we'll have that information to consider as well.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I wanna thank you gentlemen for being down here this evening, thank you.
Okay, we are to comments by Councilmembers and the City Clerk.
Councilmember Comments, I have Councilmember, or Vice President Garza, then Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to wish my beautiful wife a happy anniversary, it's our 19th wedding anniversary, and I will make a pledge that next year, when we hit the two-decade milestone, I will clear my schedule and we'll be somewhere nice and hopefully tropical.[1536.23][1536.23](Laughter).
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Spitzley, then Councilmember Cost.
You know, that could be Indiana, so you need to qualify that, 'cause it could be Indiana, go for somewhere tropical, warmer. Um, I wanted to, um, just recognize a couple things, and if this is already done, I apologize, but, you know, on September 9th, 2015, we lost a LFD firefighter, Dennis Rodman, and I wanted to just remember that, I wasn't able to do that last week, and, you know, as my son is a firefighter, it, it kinda brings close to home that he was, he was killed in the, in the line of duty on September 9th, 2015. I also want to send out my congratulations to our Senator Sarah Anthony, who was awarded Legislative Tour of the Year by the Michigan Manufacturers Association. We know that Sarah is a staunch advocate of this area, and has worked tirelessly for the Lansing area and, and her, and the rest of her district, and so we wanted to, I wanted to tip my hat off to Sarah and say job well done. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilmember Cost.
Thank you, President Wood. So, I just wanted to, to recognize, as someone that is a dues-paying UAW member, um, uh, the UAW is on strike with the big three. I wanted to, you know, mention again my support for them, in any way the community can support them, and it's not just the big three UAW, we also have Blue Cross Blue Shield right around the corner that's striking right now as well. So they are out walking the picket line, so if you get time to, to go by and honk, show your support, we are a union town, um, and, and support those folks that are asking for better wages, um, they certainly are out there, um, every day striking right now, so I couldn't be more proud of my union and, uh, of union labor, um, that built Lansing, so I appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Cost. Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, so there are a number of folks knowing Southwest Lansing, we have, um, many neighborhoods that are organized, they, they meet to discuss issues, they advocate fiercely, I think for their, for their neighbors and really for all of Southwest Lansing, and we have a number of those groups meeting this week. First, we have the Churchill Downs Neighborhood Association, they are meeting tomorrow, September 19th, uh, that's at 6:30 PM, they have moved, uh, 'cause they have quite the, quite the group now, I think, on, on any given Tuesday, it's thirty, thirty-five people that show up to these meetings. Um, they've actually moved their meetings to the El Frieda Schmidt Southside Community Center, they meet in the Sandy Allen Room, uh, so that is at 5825 Wise Road, again, that's tomorrow at 6:30 PM. Colonial Village typically meets the third Wednesday of each month, uh, due to unforeseen circumstances, they had to cancel this, uh, this Wednesday's meeting, and so they will meet again, uh, October 18th at 7:00 PM, and they always meet at Grace United Methodist Church at 1900 Boston Boulevard. Uh, we also have the Lute and Rich Neighbors Association meeting, that will take place this Thursday, September 21st at 7:00 PM, and that is at the Mayflower Church, uh, which is located at 2901 West Mount Hope. On Friday, uh, you guys have heard me talk a lot about the Southwest Action Group and the work that the Southwest Action Group is engaged in, um, we are having our second annual barbecue, um, this Friday, and that'll play, take place, uh, at the Southside Community Coalition, uh, which is at 2101 West Homes, um, that is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, uh, there will be live music, there'll be activities for kids, giveaways, um, tremendous food, and all of it's free. So we hope you come out this Friday, uh, 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Southside Community Coalition. Uh, we will have our next Southwest Lansing Constituent Contact Meeting on October 14th, again, that's at El Frieda Schmidt Southside Community Center, and we're able to move back to kind of our home location in October, uh, and that will also be in the Sandy Allen Room, um, at 10 o'clock. Um, and then I had a couple, a couple, I guess, comments, quick questions, um, I did watch the Committee of the Whole meeting from last... I did watch the Committee of the Hole meeting from last Monday, and did watch as we had the engagement over the Office of Financial Empowerment. There were a number of issues that were broached, but one of the things that stuck out to me was some, some frustrations that were conveyed regarding vacancies within that shop. This is a conversation that we're having, I think, far too often with department heads, with senior level management, and I had asked, and I know we got a lot on our plate, had asked leadership to consider bringing in at some point Human Resources, so we could talk about capacity, we could talk about processes, and potentially, you know, adding capacity in the future. But I want to make sure that what we're doing in Human Resources is best practice, because that literally is a department that supports every other department, and folks, I think, interdepartmentally or across departments are conveying frustration right now with getting things filled and the like.
Councilmember Hussein, we have that on our schedule. Our office manager, Sherry Bock, is working that into our Committee of the Hole to have Ms. O'Leary down here to discuss HR issues, so.
That's excellent.
Hopefully, it will be either the first or second meeting in October.
Great, and then I'm gonna ask the administration to at some point prepare a report for us. We had, it was Woodside Bed, Sycamore Town Home, so we're talking northwest of Jolly and South Waverly. Back in May, we had nearly three, it was almost 380 units that were pink tag. This is a property that has been in just absolute deplorable condition for an incredibly long time, and, you know, there's, there's been a number of issues with regards to enforcement, with regards to oversight in the courts, with regard to change in ownership, change in management. I think city beings kind of strung along. In any event, what that's resulted in is absolute substandard living for the people that live there. I mean, it's absolutely unacceptable. In any event, subsequent to the pink tags going out, we actually, you know, we were engaged essentially by the property owner, and their council wanted to meet. That was a meeting that you all know I invited myself to, into. I think I got myself into a little bit of trouble, because I was incredibly angry at what I was hearing in that meeting. In any event, as part of that meeting, again, we're going back to May here, they were supposed to submit a capital improvement plan with timelines. At that meeting, they actually brought that capital improvement plan, and it was substandard to say the least. They were told that they needed to come up with a new capital improvement plan that was feasible, workable, actionable, and that had reasonable timelines in place. The next, my understanding, the next CIP plan that they implemented was nearly as bad as the first. My understanding is that they were asked to submit another capital improvement plan, which I don't know where we're at. The, the reality is that I understand that there might be some change in ownership at some point. This is a game they play and have continued to play time and time again. At some point, we need to actually elevate and, and use the full force of the city to hold these folks accountable, because again, the, the conditions of that particular property, if you haven't been there, go there. It's, it's a major, major problem. And I understand we don't want to displace it, we don't want a housing crisis on our hands, but it's unacceptable. So I want to know where we're at with that, and I don't know, you know, if that comes from the Office of Law, I don't know if that comes from the administration, but I certainly hope you guys are taking this incredibly serious, and we'd like an update. Thank you.
And if we could have Public Safety's meeting on Tuesday, I realize we're talking about tomorrow, but if we could get some information to the Public Safety Committee for the meeting at 3:30 tomorrow, it would be appreciated. Okay, other councilmember comments. Just a couple of quick announcements. We also have Rejuvenating South Lansing on the Tuesday, the 26th, and that's at 6:30, and that again is meeting at the Alfreda Schmidt Community Center in the Sandy Allen Room. And there is also a program that's being put on by Inham County that is the Senior Estate Planning. That's being held on Friday, the 22nd, for seniors, and it's from 10 to noon. We have the Register of Deeds, the probate court will be there along with the Inham County Treasurer's Office, and this is for seniors to work out some estate planning so that it, it benefits them if something were to happen, so that their families are taken care of. So with that, again, that's at the Mayflower Church, right across the street from Luton School, and that's on Friday, the 22nd, from 10 to noon. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, President Wood. I just want to announce that we are out doing voter registration activities this week at Lansing Community College. So if you know someone who goes there, or if you happen to go by and need to register to vote, we will have volunteers there Wednesday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday from 9:00 to 4:00. We were out there today as well, so we were able to pick up a number of voter registrations. We always want to make sure our youth are actively engaged, as well as anyone who wants to take that opportunity. Also, we do have the upcoming city election in November, and before the next council meeting, we will be mailing absentee ballots out, so voters who are on our new permanent ballot list or who have separately just requested a ballot for this November election, you should have that in your mailbox somewhere around the 30th of September or the 2nd of October. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details.
Mark your calendar now for the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemetery's 16th Annual Fall Annual Walking Tour of Mount Hope. This year's tour on Sunday, September 24th at 3:00 PM in Mount Hope Cemetery is entitled, Philanthropists, Parks, and Places. Join us for 17 stops inside the Historic Cemetery, highlighting Lansing notables, notable philanthropists, donors of parks, and namesakes of significant places. Learn about people like the donations created by Ari Olds, Jay Gottlieb Rutter, James Turner, James W. Potter, and others, and hear about the people and places that were named for, the people parks were named for and places were named for, such as Frank Wentworth, Mark Clifford, Henry Patengill, and more. Schedule is from 3:00 to 5:00. It's free and open to the public. It will take place rain or shine unless there's thunder and lightning, and we ask that you mark your calendars now. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events.
Hello, my name is Erica. I'm the founder of Jubilee, a grassroots community organization that is building a community-sourced permanent supportive housing program in Lansing. We support families that are working to overcome homelessness. We have our annual community event coming up in a couple of weeks. It's called When September Ends. It's Saturday, September 30th at The Fledge, from 2:00 to 10:00 PM, and that day, we will be celebrating the struggle of a local family that's working to overcome homelessness. This event is about building community for people that are working to overcome homelessness, and I'd love to see you there. Mr. Mayor Shore, I respectfully have had the opportunity to facilitate a few question-answer sessions with you, and my experience there was that you didn't totally understand the difference between affordable housing and permanent supportive housing, and it wasn't appropriate for me at that time to, you know, continue that conversation, but I would love for you to be there and see what an effective response to homelessness looks like and building community for people that are working to overcome homelessness, and everyone else is invited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other community event announcements now, if I can figure out how to shut that up? Other community event announcements. Okay, see? We are to, we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. Legislative matters includes the two scheduled public hearings that we just had a presentation about, as well as items five through 10. So that's, ends up including items three through 10 on the printed council agenda. We'll give you another minute to sign up with Evelyn in the back, and at this time, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mayor Shore.
All right, thank you, Madam President. A few congratulations. I want to congratulate the Walnut Neighborhood Park grand opening, thanks to Crossroads Church, who put in all the money and raised all the money for this beautiful new park, privately-owned park at the intersection of Walnut and Old Town, so when you walk by, check it out. It was beautiful. Councilman Brown was there as well. I want to congratulate all of our seniors that were recognized as part of the RSVP seniors program, and congratulations to not council president, to Carol Wood, who is the executive director, but that was a great, a great evening, and people were very appreciative of the recognition. Our seniors do a lot for our city. I was excited to be part of the Play Michigan Accessibility Park grand opening, so if you haven't been there, please check out our newest accessibility park, which is available to all of those with disability. It's in Adato Park, up at Chiawasi and Grand, parking for, for able-bodied folks on the street and in the ramp, and then we've got a parking lot for those with, with disability needs. And I think this is the first parking lot offered those with disability needs, but watching those kids play, and it was, it was a sight to see, so I hope everyone will check that out. I also want to congratulate all of the individuals that were inducted into the Everett High School Sports Hall of Fame, which was also a fun evening. The, the National Championship Basketball Team, Irvin Johnson, a variety of others. It was, it was a lot of fun. Coach Hutchins, who of course is the winningest softball coach. It was a lot of fun, so congratulations to all those folks. We got lots of fun things coming up. On Wednesday, our Child and Family Charities will have a new groundbreaking, which will be exciting. This Thursday, for all the city employees out there, is our Employee Appreciation Day, so we'll be celebrating our city employees. Friday, our Mikey 23 Foundation has their annual gala, where they are honoring U.S. Senator Debbie Stabenow. Saturday, there's gonna be a whole display of Hispanic culture in Old Town, or no, in Rio Town, in Rio Town. And then Sunday will be the Capital City River Run in the morning, as we have every year, and the Mung New Year's Celebration will be that afternoon. So lots of, of great culture and lots of great things going on in our city in the coming weeks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're to public comment on legislative matters. Again, that's items three through 10 on the agenda, and items three and four are the public hearing for Z-8 2023 and SLU 2 of 2023 regarding 415 and 421 West Kalamazoo Street.
You didn't have anything else to add to that, did you, Councilmember Spitzley? Those are the ones for the rescue mission?
No, I, I think it was, it was, it was pretty clear. I will just add that the rezone to residential adaptive reuse allows for the application of a special land use permit, so you have to have one and then the other one. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, first we have Daniel Arnold, followed by Don Morrison.
Hello, everybody. This is Daniel Arnold. I'm a housing voucher recipient for eight years on disability income, and I come to the mission with Wendy over here, and just, it really meets my needs to, financially to be able to come and eat a meal, and there's just a lot of people who are involved, kind people involved, people I know who just come and they, they come and they serve the community, and, you know, it's, it's packed, and there's people that, that need food, shelter, everything, and so we need to, to do everything we can to expand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Don Morrison, and then Wendy Shepherd.
My name is Don Morrison. I'm a property owner within 300 feet of the projected rescue mission. It's a 52-unit apartment building. In listening to the council members, there seems to be reasonable doubt as far as having this location for the rescue mission, and I agree with you 100%. I have a bunch of balconies that will look right over that parking lot that they're gonna use for whatever. I have another 35-unit apartment building another block away, so there's 87 units that could be affected with basically a hotel. They say 200, 300 beds? I'm doubting they'd even have the staff to take care of that. I'm probably not gonna take up the three minutes based on listening to the council, again agreeing that there seems to be reasonable doubt in the zoning for this project, and as our council member over here talked about, how they talk in their rules and regulations about people. We have a lot of young folks coming into town, a lot of great things that have been done by Lansing, great things. Look at the fantastic things bringing, trying to bring people into town. I congratulate you on that, and we need to continue to do that. If we put another 300 people downtown, it'd be more than that, they'll be in staircases and everywhere else. I've been at Executive House for 18 years. I've been at Midtown for 18 years, and in the community for 25 years. So I'm gonna urge you to go with your gut. I appreciate your time this evening, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next, we have Wendy Shepherd, followed by Angelica Sherwood.
Hi, I'm Wendy Shepherd. I am an Army Vet, and I sometimes use the facility at the rescue mission for eating dinner, and I agree with the zoning, because the City Rescue Mission provides a healthy meal for those who might not have it otherwise, and the meal is free and open to all, as I have been a recipient. It provides a space to house the homeless who are in need and are hurting, have multiple issues, whatever, domestic violence, loss of income, disability. I really enjoy going to the mission, because I get to listen to the gospel of Jesus Christ before I eat, and it's, I see it as a reason to offer hope for the people who may not have any hope. Hearing the gospel transforms lives, and it gives people a reason to live and change for the better. I believe the City Rescue Mission treats people with, as humans, and they are deserving of respect and dignity that they do treat them that way. I have been treated with respect, nothing but respect, and I believe the day room will keep people who would otherwise be cold out on the streets, they'll be warm and they'll have a place to go during the day, which is a benefit. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Angelica Sherwood, followed by Erica.
Hi, my name is Angelica Sherwood, and, you know, I just want to take a second and bring it to light, as, as much of as so many of us like to consider a uncomfortable topic homelessness is, any day of the week, any single one of us, is that the, that risk of becoming homeless, whether it be due to loss of income or apartment complexes being shut down, public housing not being as affordable, you know, people on fixed incomes, social, social security, things like that, you know, so a little back history, once upon a time, I was at the City Rescue Mission, and they offer phenomenal resources there, phenomenal staff, you know, that is a place for us to go clean our lives up, pull ourselves together, and become functioning members of society. Instead of it being such an eyesore, our situation that we're in at the time, a place to go and have hope and to not feel like you're an undesirable of society is, it's a nice thing. And so, you know, I implore you guys to just take a second and just stop and think, what if it was yourselves, what if it, what if it was one of your loved ones that needed those facilities? Wouldn't you yourselves want those facilities to be available? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Next, we have Erica. Next, we have Erica, followed by Mitch Rice.
Hello, I'm Erica again. And I've said a couple times that I'm the founder of an organization that's addressing homelessness, and that's primarily because I have lived experience of being homeless in Lansing. And before I became homeless, I was actually a homeowner, and I kind of knew what kind of support I need, but it was not accessible in our community. And that's a big part of the reason why I started an organization. The first place that I was able to find the support that I needed was the City Rescue Mission of Lansing. You can look at their Maplewood location and see that the City Rescue Mission is not a hotel, but it's a great neighbor in that neighborhood. I would like to address some of your concerns about their doctrinal statement. I'm a believer. I recognize that not everyone is, so maybe that might not be appealing to them. But I would like for us as a community to think about, I'm not going to say this as a factual statement, but I do believe that all of our homeless shelters in Lansing are started by Christians and are faith-based organizations. And I think that actually says a lot about Christians. And there's, you know, we can complain about them, but I just would like to put it out into the world that, you know, the space is wide open for anyone else to start a shelter with they, where they want to perpetuate their own values. While I was at the City Rescue Mission, I saw a lesbian couple that lived there or were residing there as a guest, and they were treated well and had a good time, you know, like, nobody loves being in a shelter, but they were treated well. You know, they had smiles on their face. I talked to them every day. They, they were not like, oh, my gosh, we're being discriminated, discriminated against here. There's another narrative going around that the City Rescue Mission sends young boys to the men's shelter. I actually have a client that is residing as a guest at the City Rescue Mission right now, and she has a son that is over their age. And they've definitely made whatever, you know, exceptions are necessary for him to stay there with his family and not go to the men's mission on his own. So I think the last thing that I want to say is, like, as, as a single parent staying at that Maplewood location, it's kind of a different vibe between the families and the single women. And so I think that it would be great for the City Rescue Mission to separate those out and have that Maplewood facility be just for families. And, you know, we can all have our own personal beliefs, but it's not going to be possible to not recognize the success that the City Rescue Mission has had in our community. Thank you for letting me share.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mitch Rice, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Mitch Rice. I'm a South Lansing resident. In reference to Agenda Items Three and Four, the rezoning from D-23 Urban Core to RAR Residential Adaptive Use, Reuse District, and the special land use permit for the requested as an authorized shelter care facility. The City of Lansing continues to have several people who are unsheltered and need housing and care from the City Rescue Mission. As a volunteer for this ministry organization, I have witnessed the need for expansion of its facilities. This ministry is a key provider of care for vulnerable and needy population in our community, as well any rescue mission throughout the United States faces these needs. The City of Lansing does not have a cost related to the City Rescue Mission. There is a potential for costs for the city if other programs are developed and started by the city to address the unsheltered in Lansing. So it is a wise choice to permit expansion of the City Rescue Mission facilities. Approving a rezoning and special land use permit is a win for everyone. On a second item, in reference to Item Five, determination of the cabaret license revocation for Energy Event Center that is located in the Logan Square area, I'm in favor of voting for revocation. After reviewing the minutes from a recent committee of the whole about the event held on July 30th, the event was not properly staffed, wasn't coordinated with the city support, or monitored. Therefore, the holder of the license should not be allowed to host a future event. The potential for a future event hosted by this licensee could be a negative risk for residents based on poor management of the past event, and the violence that occurred is clear from what the materials I read. Again, I urge you to revoke the current cabaret license. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Susan Cancro.
Okay, generally speaking, I'm in favor of rezoning for the City Rescue Mission and their relocation of their facilities. I do have a few questions that are directed, I guess, more to them to answer at the next round of public hearings or whatever, but just to get them out there. I've been a supporter for a long time of the Rescue Mission, and I know they've been raising funds for some time to expand the East Michigan Avenue locations. So the questions I have are, what happens to that money? Does that money go then to this new venture? And what happens to the existing facilities? We've heard what would happen with Maplewood, and I think that's a good move. What happens with the men's facility on East Michigan? What happens with the outreach facility? And then lastly, I'm somewhat concerned that some of this is being driven not just by the need of the population they serve, but by the optics that was mentioned by them of having homeless lined up on the streets, of having people in the doorways near the new city market, near the lug nuts, near the hotel, et cetera. Are they being pressured out of their location by the forces that be that don't want those people, if you will call them in those terms, visible from their upscale new locations? Some of the wording in their cover letter was that zoning changes were part of the pressure for them to move. Is form-based zoning part of that? And it says also that the continued concerns regarding revitalizing downtown have limited their options, which is part of what leads me to think that they are being pressured out of their existing location by the fact that the other businesses and city administrators, perhaps, don't like to see homeless in front of the city market or the Lug Nut Stadium or wherever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susan Cancro, followed by David Ellis.
I think I've gotten to know some of you very well, others just recently. My name is Susan Cancro. I'm the executive director at Advent House Ministries. I'm in my 30th year of service in that position. And I just want to say two things initially. Homelessness, the degree of homelessness in our community is the worst that I've ever seen it in 30 years. And the second thing is that I have not had that experience myself, but what it does to people is it, it can be dehumanizing. And that's not to say that people who are homeless are not human at all. But when one doesn't have a place to eat, a place to get a glass of water, a place to be warm, or a place to cool off, a place to lay down, one does not feel fully human. What we've done ourselves at Advent House Ministries, and what we've done in partnership with other agencies, including the City Rescue Mission, with which we work very closely, is we try to bridge the gap between the crisis of homelessness and the assuredness of a stable life. I would ask everyone here, and we've spoken, and sometimes as we defend our own positions, we can be divisive. We don't need division right now. We've got a crisis. We have a big problem. The reason it's not seen is because so many in the community are helping. The shelters are putting people up, they're finding places. The city HRCS department has been very supportive, and I know they come under criticism because they're on the front line. And development and planning has been very supportive. I just want to say that in support of those people I've worked with all these years, please, we do not need to argue or divide among ourselves. We need to work together. Lansing is not LA. It's not San Francisco, or Anchorage, that's been in the news recently. I grew up in New York City. I love New York, but I wouldn't want to do what I'm doing there. Okay, this is tough times. We need to help people. And I know Don Morrison, we work together. Remember that? He remembers. I don't know if that was good or bad. That's the buzzer. I gotta stop, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, I know it's not easy. I'll just say one other thing. We do street outreach. The businesses on the street in Michigan Avenue have been very supportive of those who are homeless.
Thank you, Susan.
And so has the city.
Thank you.
And so have the landlords. So I want to say that. This is not a point of division, but please, support what we're doing to expand shelter we need it. Thank you.
Next, we have David Ellis, followed by Farhan Omar.
Hi, David Ellis, downtown resident, and actually a resident of Walnut Street, which this development is going to be on. I'm, of course, talking about the scheduled public hearing number three and four, which seems like everyone else has been talking on. To start off, I'd like to, I understand concerns of residents of the area of the new shelter being planned there. But I'd like to point out that with the shelter on Michigan Avenue, in the past 10 years, kitty corner to the existing shelter has been the stadium apartments. Across the street from the existing shelter has been the six, Block 600 apartments. And currently, there are two apartments under construction down the road on Larch across the street from Holy Cross. So clearly, there is already existing precedence of shelters being, not only being near residential areas, but residential areas growing around shelters. So I have no, I don't see that as a concern of a shelter being near existing people. I've actually spoken a lot with individual homeless people, and many, so, so, so many of them are actually very recent, like, post-pandemic homeless who used to have homes. I can't, I'm not a psychologist, so I can't entirely speak on this, but it seems to me that having a shelter within a community area has got to be a huge, huge boost to these individuals, to be back in a more familiar environment that they used to be proud to be in. Now, forgetting, actually, just forgetting about the shelter aspect of it and looking purely objectively at the rezone, the zoning type we're talking about is residential adaptive reuse. I heard a council member mention that that's for things like hospitals, which is actually, I am going to disagree with that, is not for hospitals. If you look through the City of Lansing, there's no hospitals that are zoned as that. It's for former institutional sites with the concerns for spot zoning. If you look at the residential adaptive reuse zone through the city, it is almost always a spot zone, because that is by nature, it is a spot zone type. It is a zone that is put on a former location. The zone has to go where former locations end up popping up. That could be anywhere. And if we're talking about the actual requirements of this zone, I actually have, I've read through all 201 pages of the zoning code, because that's what I do on a Friday night. If we read through the actual zoning code for RAR, the purpose and intent of the RAR district is to promote the appropriate reuse or redevelopment of former institutional sites. That defines this location. So I see no reason why this would not be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next is Farhan Omar, followed by Gabriel Bieber.
Good evening, Farhan Omar. I am here to talk about item number five and why we should not, we should not revoke the license for Energy Event Center. The truth of the matter is, before this business even opened its doors, we've had shootings in the city. We've had gun violence issue in the city. Even after the July 30th shooting, there has been many shootings after that. We have over five people that have died in this city since that shooting. And so I'm just confused where you guys are getting all this energy from to address gun violence, when all these years, you guys have not addressed the gun violence in this city. Just last year, over 20 people died. The year before that, over 20 people died. We've had 300 shootings in this city just this year alone. So are you guys picking and choosing what lives are, what lives matter in this city? Because I'm just confused. This is not a business issue. Whether you revoke this license, the gun violence doesn't end. And anybody who thinks that by closing the doors of this business, it is somehow going to end the gun violence in the city, is highly mistaken. We all know that. So let's stop playing games. We have over 100 unsolved homicide cases in this city, unsolved. Mothers are still seeking justice for their children, and you guys are busy worried about a business? Yes, I get it. It was, it was very tragic, very tragic. But before that shooting happened, this business only hosted two events, two. It's a new business, it's growing. Work with it. Work with it. Don't shut it, because we've had shootings in front of businesses in this city. Tin Can, shootings. Behind Impression Five, shootings. Omar's, the strip club, shootings. In front of the Lug Nut Center, shootings. So if we're going to play by this new rule that the city is going to enforce every 1,500 feet, then I guarantee you, the next shooting that takes place in front of a business, I'm going to come here and say we shut it down, and then we won't have any businesses in this city. So think about that. You guys are setting a new precedent when you guys decide to vote to shut this business down. It's not going to end the gun violence in this city. We have a lack of vision, a lack of strategy from our police department and from our mayor. That's why the gun violence hasn't ended in this city. So come on, who are you guys playing? Who are you guys exactly playing? It doesn't end the gun violence in this city. This is a racially motivated case against a black-owned business. It's just that simple, and it's not that far-fetched, because Andy Shore in this city was convicted in a federal court for creating a hostile work environment based on race. So this is nothing different. Address the gun violence and stop going after black-owned businesses and black people in the city.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Gabriel Bieber, followed by Jessica Carroll.
Thank you, councilmembers. I'm Gabriel Bieber. I'm the executive director of Haven House. I know that you have a lot of weighty matters to consider. I want to say that I strongly support the consideration of rezoning for the purposes that City Rescue Mission has outlined. We absolutely don't all agree, among those of us that serve the homeless community here in the Lansing area. We don't agree on everything, on how to serve, on the policies that we should have for our organizations. For example, Haven House is a secular organization. We're an emergency shelter for families. We also provide housing services. But we work in collaboration with other agencies like City Rescue Mission, often that have very different motivating mission statements and operating procedures. And the reason is because we all have one common purpose in mind, which is providing shelter for people when they need it, and more importantly, really helping those folks quickly find housing. I know that we've seen City Rescue Mission take great strides over the years to lower their barriers to entry. And so I think that when it comes to what's available to us now, absolutely, City Rescue Mission has filled the space. They've stepped up, they've provided really quality services, and some services that none of the rest of us are providing. When it's the middle of the night and none of the other shelters can take someone, City Rescue Mission takes them. And that's regardless of faith, or gender, or other types of identity. So Haven House is the lead agency for the homeless management information system. That means we have a lot of access to data about homelessness. I also serve as the chair of the Strategic Planning Committee for the Capitol Region Housing Collaborative. That is the body that serves as the continuum of care for Ingham County. If you have any questions about why an independent thinker would support this rezoning, please give me a call or shoot me an email. I'd be happy to inform you more about these issues. But just as a snapshot, if we look back in January of this year, some of the agencies represented here today were doing that street outreach, counting folks who are homeless. And yeah, there were And yeah, there were more than 50 unsheltered people homeless on that given night, but there was more than 600 homeless individuals in the Lansing area, and mostly in Lansing, that were sheltered on that night because most of our homeless population here is sheltered. And even though Haven House and Loews and Fishes and Holy Cross, emergency shelters are providing some of those overnight services and others like Advent House are providing crucial services. Grassroots organizations are helping too. Moms and dads are helping too. Our whole community is pulling together for this, right? But City Rescue Mission is the one that's providing shelter for the majority of those individuals on any given night in Lansing. So really, this is a no-brainer. Yes, other locations were considered, and yes, there are some pros and cons to the current location, but it really is the decision that has to be made now for the community.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Jessica Carroll.
Good evening. First, I'd like to speak as a former guest of the City Rescue Mission about how important and impactful they have been in my life. Most people have an image in their head of homeless people as dirty or negative or bad or et cetera. Unfortunately, I was one of those people with the misconception until life happened and I became homeless myself. I got to know a lot of people in the homeless community, learned that these people are people too, and most of them just need help. This mindset unfortunately can push people further into the struggle. Being homeless, I judged myself a lot based on how people would see me, and it didn't help me out of homelessness, but pushed me further into it. When I was a guest at the City Rescue Mission, sorry, don't speak well publicly, I remember walking in the door and seeing a smiling face every day, and somebody to remember my name made me feel special and made it a happier time in my life. They set me up with counseling and healthcare and resources to get sober. It was a safe place to come and have my needs met. This experience in my life brought me purpose and brought me to, brought me here in front of you today to speak as a staff member of the City Rescue Mission of Lansing. A lot of people are struggling now, and the homeless community is rising with the cost of living, and a lot of people just need help to get back on their feet. They are regular people, just like you and me. Many of them are misunderstood. There are a lot of misconceptions about homeless people. As an employee, I know that we do our best to help people and get them to a better place in their life and present them with resources to get them healthy and stable financially, mentally, spiritually, and physically. We are limited in space. We have an overflow of people that we cannot help because we simply do not have a bed available some nights, and it is very unfortunate. We want to provide food, shelter, hope, and the love of Jesus to everyone we possibly can. I'm very hopeful for this expansion project, and as for the doctrinal agreement, when I applied coming from homeless, that terrified me. So I understand, but I did sign that agreement, and I was welcomed with open arms, and it's a great company to work for, and we do not turn away people for being transgender or gay. Some of our favorite people are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was our final speaker. We do have some written communications. We have communication and support of the rezoning, especially in use from Candy Rice and one from Terry Looney. We also have one just kind of tangentially talking about the Glaster House that's next door to the proposed rezoning property and communication from Nancy Malo in support of revoking the cabaret license. And we are to the referral of the public hearings, items three and four of the West Kalamazoo properties.
They'll go back to Development and Planning Committee.
Okay, we are to resolutions for action.
With that, Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. So with that, we have the cabaret license revocation for the Energy Event Center, and I would move the modified resolution on the revocation of the cabaret license.
Okay. We have the resolution in front of us. Any questions? Councilmember Jackson.
Just a brief comment. Why I will not be supporting revocation is basically because I don't think that this move, the original move was to address gun violence. That was part of the press report, and I don't think that this does that. Based on the record that we had to refer to, that the Energy Event Center had 10 trained security guards and that the action that got them, I guess, under scrutiny was from what happened in the parking lot, but in the license, they're required to basically keep 1,500 feet safe, which is over a quarter mile. So I guess based on what happened in the parking lot is the basis of everything here, and I, there was no warnings or anything given to Mr. Cabal in the Energy Center, and I think that we could have handled it better. So not that the events weren't serious, because they were, I just don't think that revoking the Energy Center's cabaret license is the result that we should move forward on, so I won't be supporting that. Thank you.
Before we go further with that, Vice President Garza, you were moving the substitute.
Correct.
All right, we have a motion on the substitute, and then we'll take any other further comment. So we have a motion on the substitute. All in favor of the substitute, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. With that, we are talking to the substitute. We had councilmember Brown's comments, or councilmember Jackson's comments. Are there any other comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of the revocation of the license, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
So that's five, three. Our next item, Vice President Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. What we have before us next is the budget priorities for the fiscal year 2024 to 2025.
And it's the substitute here.
And it's the substitute. Do we need to?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to move the substitute.
So we have a motion on the substitute. All in favor of the substitute, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Vice President Garza.
All right, thank you. I'll try to be quick with these.
No, that's okay.
So with the budget priorities, we have, coming from the committee, the whole, $100,000 for one full-time focus, one full-time employee focused specifically on housing legal assistance for tenants and homeowners in the city. We have a fund sidewalk repair by $200,000 for a total of $600,000 with a priority placed on underserved areas. We have a fund local street repair funding for, by 1.7 million for a total of 7 million with a priority placed on underserved areas. Funding for a GED prep and passage program. Sustainability, $134,000 funding for marketing, training, professional development, needed risk assessment and updated plans, along with additional part-time employee. $400,000 funding for additional staff for arborists and equipment in the forestry department. $75,000 feasible study for a community center located in southeast Lansing. Coming out of the committee in development and planning, $80,000 for one full-time employee, LEDC, focused on small business, minority businesses, and female-owned businesses. $250,000 increased funding for the facade improvement grant program. Analysis of facade improvement grant program to include return on equity report on previous facade grants provided by small businesses, including a statistical breakdown of what wards have been impacted by this program. An A under that three is requested that the report be submitted to the city council no later than March 1st, 2023. $40,000 to initiate an RFP for engagement of stakeholders and completion of community facility plans, including school and county buildings, complete with inventory of assets and goals, goal objectives for facilities that will serve as the basis for community facility decisions into the future. $80,000 for one full-time employee, compliance employee, to ensure all development agreements are being followed, including but not limited to income tax collection, TIFs, pilots, and brownfields. Coming out of the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Committee, City of Lansing will include their 2024, 2025 budget, public safety planning, a commitment support, and partnership with Advanced Peace, which will help, help lives and reduce the life-altering trauma experienced by people living in impacted communities and by the service providers who support them. $80,000 for one-time employee, one full-time employee, human resources employee, focused on DEI in the hiring process to work towards having a workforce that reflects the diversity of the city of Lansing. Public safety, zoning personal staff or administration tasks, relations relating to commercial corridor specialists, portable speed bumps, reinstate LFD apprenticeship intern program, economic development planning, dedicated resources to searching appropriate databases for non-homestead ownerships, implement a pilot program to incentivize landlords to accept Section 8 vouchers. Coming out of the Committee of Ways and Means, continue to explore new municipal incentives under the Inflation Reductor Recovery Act to invest in solar energy for the city facilities. Coming out of Ad Hoc Homeless and Solutions 2023, economic development and planning, develop a comprehensive plan with HRCS and COC to ensure that grant dollars are being utilized as intended with outcomes that can be defined as quantitative. Complete the study of existing rental fees to ensure they are sufficient and consistent to meet rigorous needs for safety housing with communities of similar size. Create a landlord registry either through the BSNA portal or other platform that is publicly accessible. HRCS require DEI training by an outside organization to those provider agencies. Through the housing abutment, prepare education materials for renters, included but not limited rights of renters, know before you sign lease, district court eviction, court information. Conduct at least two housing fairs in the city with MSU law each year and creation of a brochure by the administration on where tenants can go for assistance. Utilize all community centers in the different areas of Lansing as warming and cooling centers during the heat and cold events. This would require funding for after-hour operations for security staff and other expenses that may not be included, that may be included. Law courts supports creation of a community court with 54A District Court and continued support for eviction diversion program. Almost done. Implement policy where nuisance action filed against recalcitrant, I don't even know how you say that, landlords enabling city attorney to enter into voluntary compliance agreements. And with that, I would move the resolution, the budget amendment.
We have a motion. I see a friendly amendment we need to make, and that is for number 3A. It should say March 1st, 2024 instead of 2023. So we have that friendly, right, Vice President?
Yes.
Okay. All right. With that, do we have any other things? Seeing nothing? All those in favor of the substitute resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously, and Mr. Mayor will make sure that the corrected copy gets to your office. Thank you. Well, we met our October deadline, so, yes, Councilmember Brown.
Oh, I just want to say thank you, Vice President Garza, for reading all that.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Vice President Garza. This is the budget amendment for HRCS, and I think we have a substitute to that as well. No, it's this one, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes. Go ahead, Vice President Garza.
Okay, I move for the adoption of the substitute.
All right, we have a motion on the substitute. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now the motion.
Okay, so this is where we would appropriate $500,000 from state revenue funds, total general fund revenue appropriation, and appropriation continues under human services racial equity for another amount totaling $500,000. So let it be resolved, the administration is authorized to create appropriation accounts and to make this necessary, operating transfer for the expenditure and control of these appropriations.
And this is for hoteling, and we have a motion, and with that, I would move to recuse myself.
Okay. We have a motion to recuse. Councilwoman Wood, President Wood, all those in favor, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? All right, motion passes.
All right, we have a motion before us. Are there any other questions on this amendment? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Vice President Garza, our next is our disaster fund.
Okay, we have a substitute in place.
No, I don't think we do for the disaster fund. That one went through without one.
So with that, I would move the budget amendment for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, establish disaster contingency fund.
All right, we have a motion on that. Are there any questions? Seeing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Passes 7-1.
Okay, we are to reports from council committees from the Ad Hoc Committee on Homelessness and Solutions.
And that would be Councilmember Brown as chair.
Thank you so much, President Wood. We put through the, you know, budget priorities, and we are going to have our, working on our final report for October 6th, we met today, and we just want to refine a few things.
But your budget priorities, we were included in this, so that, you meant that charge of your assignment.
Yes. And once again, I want to thank Councilman Garza for reading all of that.
Okay, thank you. All right. Ordinances, we're to ordinances.
We have an ordinance of the city of Lansing. We're to passage of ordinances, ordinances, and we have an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances by amending Chapter 288, Section 288.21, define responsibilities, functions, and reporting timelines to the Lansing City Council at a public meeting. The ordinance is read a second time by its title and is on the order of immediate passage.
Vice President Garza.
With that, I would move the ordinance for the chief strategy officer.
And again, this is talking about their responsibilities as well as a timeline for giving reports. Are there any questions on that? Seeing none? If you could call the roll, please.
On adoption of the ordinance, Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Spadafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Eight aces, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted.
And Vice President Garza, you're asking?
I would ask for immediate effect.
We have a motion for immediate effect. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters. If you wish to address city council, you'll have up to three minutes. You do need to sign in in the back with Evelyn on a yellow sheet in about the next minute or so, and in the meantime, we are to reports of officers, boards, and commissions.
Vice President Garza.
Thank you, Council President. I make a motion that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
We have a motion before us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Okay, we have minutes of boards and commissions.
Placed on file.
Joint reappointment, Monica Jainer to the Community Corrections Advisory Board.
And that's Public Safety Committee.
Fireworks display for the Silverbells Celebration.
That will go to City Operations, but there is information that is incorrect and not available, so they need to reach back out to our staff before that goes on their agenda. So if we could have, again, that'll go to City Operations, but still needs to be supplied the appropriate information.
Okay, we have a liquor license, Raft Shaw Vineyard, for an off-premise tasting room at 2010 East Michigan Avenue.
City Operations.
Items from the mayor, the appointment of Andrea Bytley to the Board of Police Commissioners.
And that goes to Public Safety.
Reappointment Nikki Solden to the South Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority.
That goes to Development and Planning, and we also need to have verification of the information. The application was 2020, and so we need verification that that's still current. So that will be, go to the committee, but stays on hold until that information is provided.
The appointment of Ted Odell to the Planning Commission. The appointment of Ted Odell to the Planning Commission.
That goes to Development and Planning.
Reappointment of Frank Lee to the Human Relations and Community Services Advisory Board.
That goes to City Operations. And again, this is one that was an application that was done in April of 2022, so we need verification that that information is correct.
Reappointment of Versi Williams to the Human Relations and Community Services.
That goes to Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And...
Versi Williams.
Pardon?
Number 19.
Yes. That goes to, oh, I'm sorry, to City Operations. And we also need verification on that. That application is for 2020, so we need to make sure that that application is current.
And then the reappointment of Rachel Raquel Sparkman to the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Advisory Board.
And that goes to Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And that application is July 2022, and we need verification that that information is current.
Reappointment Samantha Troutman to the Historic District Commission.
That is Development and Planning, and we need, the application that we have is 2019, and it's our understanding she no longer lives at 115 North Genuson. So we need appropriate information on that.
Okay, Grant Acceptance Financial Empowerment Center, Jackson National Life Grant.
And that's Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Grant Acceptance OS reentry program for the Financial Empowerment.
And that's Ways and Means and Internal Auditor. Both of those are coming from the Financial Empowerment Center, and we do not have grant forms for those. So those need to be updated before they're taken up in committee.
Grant Acceptance, Section 219 Federal Funding for CSO Downtown.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
Sole Source Purchase for Lansing Police Department for all city management services for school crossing guard program.
Ways and Means and Internal Auditor.
And Act 4, 2022, the remaining street dedication and land transfer for the Red Cedar Development.
City Operations.
Communications and petitions. Notice from the Liquor Control Commission, Irish House Company requests to release a license from Escrow at 1910 West Saginaw.
City Operations.
Notice of an Off-Road Vehicle Ordinance from the Clinton County Board of Commissioners.
Public Safety and Police on file.
And we are to remarks by council members.
Remarks from council members, other than Councilmember Garza wants to get home to celebrate his anniversary. Okay?
I have long remarks, too.
Okay. All right. We have none?
Okay, then we are to remarks by the mayor.
Mayor, sure. He has none.
Okay, public comment on city government-related matters. We have Norma Bauer, followed by Vial Trice.
I'm Norma Bauer, and as many of you know, my heart is moved with compassion for unhoused people. I'm a member of the nation outside, and their nationwide push that's entitled, "The Rent Is Too Damn High." And I'm telling you right now that over 600 people showed up on the lawn first day of the legislation session that what we need is statewide rent control. We heard a lot of horror stories. I'm sure anybody who's ever experienced homelessness knows what it's like and how we're all at risk of it. Lansing Housing Commission, terrible conditions that are never remediated. They sold it to a for-profit company that said that they could guarantee that there'd be so many Section 8 houses. They can't guarantee that. They're not the ones who make the decision about who gets Section 8. And even when they do, if somebody's got a two-month lease going, they can't show up tomorrow, which is what many Section 8 landlords want. And there's not nearly enough of them. So, big problems. Another problem is municipal control, because some cities just don't care how many mega landlords they get to gouge tenants and tell them, "Yeah, you can move in as soon as you give us a $600, two-month deposit." And then they do, and then they're told that the rent just went up $600. You know, that's not fair, right? So I learned today where Sarah Anthony and Kara Hope stand on this issue. They're inclined to think that municipal control is great in the democratic-controlled cities because they're liberal and they're going to vote for things that are good. And then there's the rest of the state. And I'm here to tell you, lots of people from all over the state came. They actually rented buses to come to that event on the lawn. And it's going to be another legislative day where we try to listen to the legislators and find out why they don't understand. We've got to get rid of municipal control, and we've got to give it statewide. And the state will handle it in a much better way than what's happening now. So when it comes to the Lansing City Council, I hope you all will go on record to be in favor of statewide rent control. And I'll be here to check on you. And explain why in greater detail, if you like. Not tonight.
Thank you, Norma.
Thank you. Next, we have Vial Trice, followed by Farhan Chek Omar. Okay, Farhan.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vial didn't.
Okay.
I apologize.
Thank you.
All right, so what's the plan now? What is the plan to address the gun violence in this city? You guys have revoked his business, his license, so what's the plan? I want a plan from City Council. I want to see a plan from our mayor as far as addressing, truly, addressing the gun violence in this city. The mayor has held conferences, press conferences, with his police chief. He has held some with pastors. He has held some with Sarah Anthony, and we have yet to see a concrete plan when it comes to gun violence in this city. Adam, I like you, I respect you, but this wasn't the only shooting in your ward that has happened this year. There's been many shootings. The first ward has had many shootings. The second ward, third ward, fourth ward, at large. The entire city has been dealing with gun violence in this city. And so, when are we truly going to address the gun violence in this city? When are we going to stop it? That's truly my question. All right? Let's put the political stunts to the side. Let's put the propaganda to the side, and let's address the gun violence in this city, because kids are dying. Kids are dying. And more kids are going to die. Tonight, somebody's going to get shot and killed. God forbid, but it's possible. Tomorrow, this weekend. And so, we have a gun issue in the city. We don't have a business issue. That business did not pose a colossal danger to this community. The gun violence does. We've had, what was it, 517 gun range? 60 guns were stolen from that store. 60. I am sure many of those guns are in Lansing being used.